We need to order, Madam Third, roll call.
Councilor Barton.
Present.
President Councilor Cahill.
Present.
President Councilor Capano. Absent Councilor Chakoudis.
Present.
President Councilor Calucci.
Present.
President Councilor Pryton.
Present.
President Councilor Seh.
Present.
President Councilor Floyd.
Present.
President Councilor Lozey.
Present.
President Councilor Net.
Present.
President Councilor Trahn.
Present.
Present and present.
Could you please rise and join us for a moment of silence? We're joined by Congressman John Tierney. Congressman Tierney, if you could lead us into the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic of our birth, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam First.
We need a motion to approve the meeting minutes of April 8th, April 15th, and April 29th, 2014.
A motion has been made to approve and seconded. Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. The ayes have it. The minutes are accepted. Communications.
We have time.
We have time. We have a presentation, Madam First, correct?
We do have a presentation by Congressman John Tierney.
We are joined this evening by our Congressman John Tierney. He is here at our request to discuss FEMA flood maps and flood insurance. Congressman, if you could join us. Just a little bit about Congressman Tierney. He is in his ninth term representing the sixth congressional district here in Massachusetts. He has recently been named the ranking member for the Subcommittee on Health, Employment, Labor, and Pensions for the covering Congress, which are all very, very important issues to a lot of folks in the city of Lynn. There have been recent actions at the federal level regarding FEMA maps, regarding flood insurance that had an impact on coastal communities in Massachusetts and in particular the city of Lynn. We were gracious and happy enough to host one of the two public hearings in the sixth congressional district here in the city of Lynn. We have yet to approve the maps, much to the behest of our friends in ISD, but I promise that we would do our due diligence. And we are honored to have Congressman Tierney here today to discuss his efforts and some suggestions for the city of Lynn going forward. Congressman Tierney, the floor doors.
Thank you very much. President Cahill, Madam Council, Madam clerk. First of all, thank you for inviting me to come and join you this evening. I appreciate that. And I hope we can add a little bit of clarity to some of the things that have gone on with respect to flood insurance and then the maps as well. There were tremendous amount of misunderstanding, much of which was occurred because of the way that things were implemented. There were two things going on really. One was that Congress passed a bill because FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, who runs the flood insurance program, had a serious debt deficit on that, about $24 billion after some major storms, Sandy being the most recent one. Katrina's Sandy to build up on that. By the time they cleared up all the claims, they had a substantial debt on that. So there was a great movement out there to figure out how we're going to adjust the premiums for flood insurance program because that's where the money came from, from a pool of money that was used to pay off claims. And how do they go about doing that? Plus, other people were complaining that people in flood zones were being subsidized by taxpayers generally, so their insurance premiums were down. So Congress passed a bill. It was bipartisan bill, the waters bigger bill, and basically asked FEMA to do a study at the General Accountability Office or National Science Foundation to do a study on what we might do in terms of realigning the risk so that the homeowners will pick up a reasonable portion of the risk as opposed to the taxpayers and how they would then phase in any implementation of new rates that were there. Who would their grandfather have not affected all? Who would be brought in? How quickly would they be brought in with the adjusted rates and so on? Unfortunately, FEMA then took upon themselves to go out and not do the study. And this went out and all of a sudden people got notices that their premiums, they wound up in many cases substantially. And that raised the first concern. Separate from all of that, FEMA then had taken upon itself to do some new maps. It was nothing to do with the law that was passed on. They just thought that this was an appropriate time to do maps. And they went out and remapped a number of areas, including Massachusetts, and a lot of new people found themselves included in flood zones that they'd never been before. So they took a double whammy. They were in the zone they hadn't been before and the premiums were being adjusted on that basis. This is one thing that we have bipartisan agreement on. People across the country were affected and we managed to start putting some legislation together to delay the implementation of the law so that the study could be done and we could determine where we were going. We didn't get it totally delayed for five years, but we backed it up substantially and people now are going to have some time to have this implemented on that. And there are going to be some caps as to just how much the premiums can go up in a year until they reach the final point. And people that were already in property, property that had been in the flood zones at the very beginning when the maps were done, whatever rate they were at that point, that's going to be the rate that we grandfathered it. Other people that get into a new rate after their study is done will have a cap. They can't go up more than 15% on a given year, so that'll be phased in more slowly. And we've asked FEMA also to make sure that they try to keep it so that no particular homeowner has a premium that'll be more than 1% of the mortgage on the house. So we tried to put in as much as we could on that. Very confusing for people. We also determined that we don't think FEMA used the right methodology on mapping in many instances. And so we've been working with people if they want to appeal the maps to apply to their neighborhood or their community or even their city or town, try to get some information available for people so that they can make the challenges because you do have to appeal on a case-by-case basis. We found that Rockwood, for instance, based their appeal on methodology used because FEMA had used the wave situation of the West Coast. Our situation's much different here. Most of our storms are in our east, so it's a whole different wave pattern and that affected the mapping, of course. So we have done a number of things. We've had two meetings in the district that we publicized as well as we could, one here in Lynn with FEMA down here to answer the questions of individuals and communities and one up in Newbury so people could do it. And we had people from Lynn in both of those meetings as well. And then we brought down an expert that had been working for FEMA years ago, but now was out as a consultant, was an expert. And we had a meeting in Ipswich. Again, Lynn had represented there as did others, trying to get people through the process of what to do if they had a question either as a community or as an individual. And we continue to work on trying to make sure that FEMA does the maps in the correct way, that people know if they want to appeal. And we continue to press for a little more relief on the statutory side as well. But I want to just thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come in and mention all of this because I hope that people either reading your minutes or watching this in some way, they know they go on our website, they call the office, they can get in touch with FEMA directly, and I'm sure they'll be coming to you at some point in time asking for assistance as well. And I invite all of you, you know, feel free to call the office and we can make sure that we get people if you talk to you if you want to appeal, you know, on a city basis or neighborhood basis or you can help some individuals on that. Mr. President, if you may, ask a question?
Thank you Congressman. I think of explanation as well. I would open up to the council for any questions. Councilor Barton.
What can the city do to challenge those maps?
If you have, you'll need your own maps and you'll need to be able to go back and determine the date of your original maps and then you work through with your people to determine whether or not FEMA had used the proper map when they went out. And if you have a question of the methodology, be able to challenge it on that basis. So you'll have your engineers who'll be involved in that and then you'll have a takeout from that point.
Any further questions? Councilor Seh.
I notice you, Barton, that could be grandfathered, but one of the problems in Congress, that's fine for the people that are living there, when they say their grandfather doesn't need all the terms, but the problem is that people have started selling houses, homes in these areas, which one of them is my wife, yet a value of their property is going down because of this. Because people are afraid that once they buy the property, the premium might be, like here now, maybe it's going up. Is there anything Congress can do to help with that?
Well, right now, while we're in this period trying to get FEMA to do the maps and I'm sorry, do the study so we can determine on that, the seller will have the same position as the buyer on that. But it does leave a lot of uncertainty going forward on that. So we're trying to, we only gave people 18 months to do the study and to back out and plan who their grandfather, who they weren't, and what the increase was going to be and how they were phased in and away. Try to keep premium increases so that they don't go over 1% of the mortgage value and they don't go over 15% on a given year. So we're trying to expedite as quickly as possible and get to a point certainty so people won't fall into that situation. But at least they know that it won't go over 15% a year on that, that the absolute rate will still be set and we can get them to correct some of the assessments that they made.
So that when they buy the property, they can't be 15% lower?
If their premiums are going to, if their premiums are going to go up, if they find it's over that, then it will go over no other 15% a year on that until they get to the final point where their premiums are going to come once.
Any other questions? Councilor Lozey.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you Congressman Tierney for your ethics in Congress and bringing this relief. As you well know, it kind of was sprung on the American public and Ward one, by the way, has translucent flax on, as you probably know. And a lot of people have been adversely impacted by these changes and there's just so many that were raised. As Councilor Seh pointed out, I think a new owner is not protected, and correct me if I'm wrong, when they come into the property, they're subject beyond that 15% increase that the previous owner may have enjoyed.
Well, right now, while we're doing it, the new owner is going to take the same position as the buyer on that, but they are going to have to be affected.
They are protected in that.
Well, at the moment, all right, but they're also, if there's a change of the value of the property, if there's a change in the mapping or something like that, they could be affected. And then they're going to have to, the study is going to go into play as to how much will be affected a given year and we have to be cautious in that.
Yes, and you mentioned earlier Congressman Tierney about the changes in the mapping that FEMA had undertaken and the firm maps have changed as much as two and a half feet in some locations and they've actually broadened to much greater inclusive areas, which, you know, is debatable. And I think earlier you said, you mentioned, and I was unclear, these people would have to hire a survey or an engineer in order to get FEMA to revise these.
If you're dealing with a lot by lot, then the owner could have to do that. And sometimes it's expensive, something between $700, $800. It could be less, but sometimes it can go up that expensive. But some municipalities can also pay because sometimes it's an entire municipality that's involved in that, sometimes a neighborhood on that. So the people can try to work out that situation, sometimes get together with others who maybe they have a plot plan that covers a whole area or whole street or neighborhood on that basis. But your city maps can be a good place to start, to see whether or not FEMA was working off of the right maps to begin with or whether they were, you know, working on a false set of maps on that. We found that to be the case in some places around the country where they didn't have the right starting point and that allows for a challenge. The methodology, as I said, sometimes is not appropriate on that. But, you know, you have to check and see whether or not you really believe you have a case sometimes to get out of that new map situation because they may have made some inappropriate views of what was going on. The mapping that they did a lot of was aerial and so sometimes you might be able to bring in evidence about the topography or other things that would change that view. So it's very much, you know, something that you may have to appeal on your own, but you may have, you know, ability to do it with some of your neighbors or with the community.
Yeah, Congressman Tierney, it's difficult because the process is actually a letter of a map revision that requires these people to hire an engineer or a survey. So it's kind of crummy how FEMA, you know, did change it dramatically in many locations as they did. And I think, you know, more time needs to be taken and...
We have a bill filed right now that delayed for three to five years on that bottom line and that's because we agree, it was crummy, I agree, it was crummy like that. It was, it was not what was intended, it was not what the statute said. The statute was pretty clear, they were going to do the study, have the study done and then they would come back to us with the way, how they're going to phase it in, who their grandfather and the whole implementation process. So we want to get back to that point and push them. So we got a pathway there and it was built that we passed more recently to back that off somewhat. We're still pressing on to do a little bit more on that. The other, you know, part of it is there are things that homeowners can do to substantially reduce their premiums. And if they went to some of the meetings that we had on the district on that, we have quite a bit of advice from people as to ways that they can, you know, lower their premiums. They may fill their basement, they go up on stilts, take other actions on that, move their electrical and other things up the basement, different ways that they can go on that. And communities can also make sure they do things that will lower the premiums anywhere from 10% to 40, 45% on that. So those are the things that the community can look into and the state that then will be able to try and make sure that they qualify for those kinds of adjustments.
Thank you for your efforts on this, Congressman.
Councilor Ford.
Well, thank you for coming Congressman Tierney. Now, one of my districts I represent, about the southern strip of Boston Street, Southern Street, enormous calls. I agree with Councilor Lozey. A lot of my constituents, I think, would be into the neighborhood meeting style. There's so many affected that live in that area of Southern Boston. In three to five years, just the number of things you said, Ty, I appreciate you coming to give me reply to the many calls I receive.
Well, if the council feels at some point in time that it would be useful to have FEMA come back, you know, they've been here twice and they're not always going to get down it, we can certainly try to get them back again if people didn't get to either one of those meetings or aren't getting satisfaction calling them directly. And even if they want to speak to a person who's an expert, so to speak, we don't necessarily endorse the expert or my dad, but we can make at least one that we know is available and you can recommend others on that basis who worked for FEMA, know how the process works, get the advice, they want ways to try to get some discounts, also ways to qualify or challenging the map and things of that nature.
That's good. Thank you, Mr. President. Councilor Cluj.
I'd like to make a motion. Can we get the law department to challenge FEMA maps? Can we, the motion?
A motion has been made for law department to look into challenging the FEMA maps. I'll second it for a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second. I need discussion on that motion. Seeing none, roll call.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakoudis.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Pryton.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahn. Yes, eleven, yes.
Motion carries. Councilor Barton.
Yes, I also wanted to thank Congressman Tierney for his efforts with the flood maps. And I also have a significant part of reward that is affected by it. It's like almost anybody and by the river there, if there's a puddle, if I had a puddle in front of their house, I'm just going to have the insurance rates go up. But the efforts put in by you will help a lot. I just wanted to say, if we could formally request that FEMA do come back because of the new legislation, it'd probably be good for them so people could know the changes that were made. Because we had pretty good turnout when they came here to City Law, I believe. So if they could follow up, like I said, with the new legislation being passed, I think it would be really helpful. Well, we'd be happy to have a question to them, again, to see if they come back and they're coordinated so it's a convenient time for folks. And we'll also be happy to work with a little part of the data where to intersect with FEMA and get a stand on that question.
If I may Congressman, we may have to have you back as you all been receiving texts. Apparently the sound is unoperable at Lynn Cam right now. So although many people in City Lynn are watching, if you do sign language, I think it would have been a better discussion for the folks who couldn't hear us. However, they will be fixing, and of course, there's always lynnhappens.com that has this with audio and they will be fixing it for their broadcasts tomorrow at 2:00 and 8:00. So we apologize that folks are texting if they want to hear what you have to say and they will tomorrow.
I should be able to get away with it all the time. So we... Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you very much Congressman. We appreciate you doing yours as well. Any other questions for the Congressman? Thank you again Congressman. We'll take a brief recess for the Congressman. We'll be taking our moments very shortly. Madam Clerk.
First public hearing is the city's annual Action Plan Community Development Block Grant, Home Grant, and Emergency Solutions Grant.
I am going to open a public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Mr. Walker. Please identify yourself on the record, Mr. Walker.
Good evening, Mr. Council President, fellow council members. My name is Dylan Walker and I represent the Office of Economic and Community Development. And our department is responsible for administering the three entitlement grants that we get from HUD each year. The first grant is the Emergency Solutions Grant and it will be funded at a level of $190,000 this year, which represents about $30,000 more than last year's allocation. And we propose to fund a rental assistance program, a security assistance from multi-service center, as well as expenses related to operating the multi-service center. The second grant is the Home Investment Partnership Grant, which will be funded at a level of $640,000 and that represents a $20,000 increase over last year's allocation. And we propose to fund a rehabilitation grant home program, a first-time home buyer assistance program, a neighborhood stabilization program, and a rental assistance program with these funds. The community development block grant allocation this year is about $2.3 million, which represents about level funding from last year's application. And with regard to economic development activities, we plan to fund a small business assistance center, which is operated by the literary chamber of Congress, a commercial aside grant program, an infrastructure development program, and a small business home program. With regard to housing, once again, we plan to fund a rehabilitation grant home program and a neighborhood stabilization program. When it comes to community facilities, we'd like to fund some renovations to Lynn Commons and will also be applying for a $400,000 state application to assist with this project. We also recommend some capital improvements to the stone cottage building, which is located in High Rock Reservation, and we will be applying for a $100,000 state grant to help with this particular project. We also recommend the installation of a water splash pad at Kylie Park and we will be applying for a state application in the amount of $200,000 to assist with this. We also recommend funding the shade tree installation program and we will be applying for another state grant in the amount of $20,000 to assist with this activity. And we also like to do some capital improvements to the multi-service center as well as some renovations to Goldfish Mall. We also plan to fund 25 public service activities, including elder care services, physical and mental health care, drug creation, drug training, an unemployment program, arts and cultural activities, as well as educational programming. And this year, we plan to fund four new public service agencies. And I'm here tonight to obtain city council support for the city of Lynn's fiscal year 2015 action plan application to HUD and I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor, Mr. Gass? Could you please state your name and address on the record?
David Gass, 150 Leeway in Memphis, director of Highlands Coalition. We applied for block grant and I don't know if I'm for or against, I'm not for the plan obviously, but we were denied for the third year in a row. I just want to talk about, maybe we can get some funds. What we applied for is to be able to work at Cook Street Park with the renovations that you planned. Thank you for the bond bill that's really been arriving most of the parks in the city. Two years ago, we started to revive the Cook Street Park with Councilor Trahn and we got a petition of 140 neighbors to say that we wanted to garden, community garden at the park and it was supported by Parks Commission. We built the garden and you know what? The police said, games don't show up there anymore, the people do. So it helped to turn the park around. This year, and you also know about the terrible fight at the Cook Street Park that was, went down all over the country. So this year, we applied for funds to help organize a neighborhood group to defend and protect the equipment that's being installed at the park and the trees that will be planted and other things, benches. So the history of the park is that 20, 30 years ago, the city put in a lot of money to it. 10 years ago, they did also, what happens to a park that's not protected by the neighbors? It falls apart. So our goal as a community group would be to organize a community, friends of the park. And that's what we asked for, $11,600. We would like, we would like to amend the action plan to include somebody toward helping to organize a friends group to show how a neighborhood group can protect city investment.
Thank you, Mr. Gass. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Mr. Anderson, if you could please state your address and your name for the record.
Yes, Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street in Lynn. And I'm for the block grants too, except I agree with the speaker that the Cook Street Park needs some consideration as well. Now, a few years ago, I served on the body of the Community Development Citizens Advisory Board. And this is exactly the type of project that we used to love to have money, give money for. The important thing about this one is it's a community effort and there's so much volunteerism here. Any few thousand dollars that are awarded in grants are just a fraction of the sweat equity and thousands and thousands of dollars worth of hundreds of hours given to this project. So we're not just asking for a handout, we're looking, we're looking for something to seed money to make this park do better. I've had a personal hand in this the past couple of years and the park has turned around. We just need a little bit more spin around.
Mr. Anderson, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, the public hearing for the portion for those wishing to speak in favor is now closed. I now open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Mr. Walker, you are speaking in opposition here. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. What is the wish of the council? Councilor Seh or Councilor Trahn?
Thank you. To the chair, if I could, Mr. President, I'd like to, I'd like to Mr. Walker.
Mr. Walker, please.
As chairman. Thanks, Senator. Is there any way, I know you heard the whole scale tonight, I mean, we are in the process of doing a little budget, we have a budget issue with funding, we've got the equipment company. We take a bunch of the names, like we did the Henry Air. We all, you know, save a solid labor, we all, you know, but actually a lot of my colleagues came, I thank them for that, helped us through the playground. Is there any way, is there any money that we can, you know, we're not looking for $11,600 and we get like half one? Is there money there that we can look back at before we vote on this tonight?
Yes, first of all, we are in the middle of a duty day public comment period and the recommendations that are here tonight are just that, they're initial recommendations. And the mayor is the local authority authority and she can alter the initial recommendations. So there still is time to do that if there is a way to do that, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to be on record publicly that I'm, you know, pleased, appreciate the mayor would, I might have to do a form of motion, whatever that I, you know, like to have, I'm coalition for the Cook Street playground be, you know, considered some of the random.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
A second, Matt. A second. Okay.
A motion has been made...
I'm actually asking for a motion to send to the mayor a letter and please support them with, not the whole of $11,600, but on behalf of one, for...
So a motion has been made to have the city council send a letter to the mayor in support of initiatives at the Cook Street program in particular. It was segmented by Councilor Cluj. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakoudis.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Pryton.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahn.
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
Motion carries. Any more questions or at this point, I would take a motion to approve or deny so we can second the discussion going further. A motion has been made to approve and seconded. Any further discussion, any further questions for anyone in the audience? Seeing none. Motion has been made to approve and seconded. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Craig?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Boyd?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
Next public hearing.
Petition of Fidelina's Kitchen, Masey Baro Lanano, and Fidelina Garcia for permission for a food service establishment where alcoholic beverages in addition to food are served at 4 to 10 Green Street.
We're going to, we're going to still open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor, anyone wishing to speak in favor, anyone wishing to speak in favor. Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, I'm going to close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition, seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. Councilor Calucci. Motion has been made to table non-debatable, seconded by Councilor Capano. Roll call.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Craig?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Boyd?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
That has been tabled. Next public hearing, madam clerk.
Petition of East Coast International Church, current length and permission for a cafe food establishment with thousands of operations, Sunday through Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at 61 Monroe Street.
I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor, seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Would anyone mind speaking in opposition? Madam, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record.
Renee Farster Degenhart, 49 Monroe Street, apartment 406. As a 10-year resident to the revitalized downtown area, we've been neighbors with East Coast International Church for several years, and while they have done some good things, I think that they have, you know, been good citizens in keeping their streets clean and providing good services. They have also caused some hardships for those of us that live downtown, in particular parking. They have events almost every night of the week, as well as most days on Sundays and most of Saturdays. As a mother to a 10-month-old who is trying to raise her family here in downtown Lynn, that makes it difficult. Additionally, there has been, within the block community, a lot of talking about what might be coming into that space, and they are considering adding a rehab facility, an addition, an inpatient rehab facility to the upper floors, where they hope to have the cafe, have job training that feeds those back and forth. I would not be comfortable with this type of facility, and I'm worried that by approving the cafe there, it's leading to a slippery slope of things that would be detrimental to the downtown area.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? I see no one else wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. What's the wish of the council? Councilor Chakoudis. Councilor Chakoudis, may I ask, is the petition here today? Does anyone see the petition here today? Is the petition here today by any chance?
Motion to table.
Motion has been made to table by Councilor Chakoudis, seconded by Councilor Lozey. That is a non-debatable issue. Roll call, please.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Craig?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Boyd?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
Councilor Chakoudis, would you like the council to send a letter to the petitioners requesting their presence?
Yes.
At a future city council meeting? Okay, well, madam, madam clerk, you can note that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next, sir. Petition of White House Scott Harney for permission to install approximately 95 feet of 1' PVC concrete with closed conduits starting at National Grid MH 1221 to private property at 175 Market Street.
I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing someone rising, speaking in favor halfway? I'm going to, I think I'm going to continue to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor, seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition, seeing no one in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. Councilor Chakoudis.
I can motion to table.
Motion has been made to table and seconded by Councilor Trahan. It's a non-debatable, roll call.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Craig?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Boyd?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
The next public hearing.
Petition of White House Scott Harney for permission to install approximately 290 feet of 4-inch SCH 40 PVC concrete case conduit starting at National Grid MH 621 to National Grid MH 621 Pleasant Street at State Street.
I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, I'm going to close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition, seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I'm going to close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I'm going to close the public hearing. Councilor Chakoudis.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve, has been seconded by Councilor Calucci. Any discussions? President. Councilor Lozey.
Is the, is the Harney here?
Is there a Scott Harney in the audience today? Is there a Scott Harney in the audience today? Does anyone know who Scott Harney is?
Yes, none. Okay, I have a few questions for.
Mr. Harney. Councilor Seer. I apologize, Councilor Seer.
I've never heard, like, tell them, just wondering, are they a company that works for National Grid, does work for them, does he come work on the city floor? Sorry, I'm tearing up 290 feet of fiber networks.
Fiber networks.
Fire network networks.
I think they're using National Grids.
National Grid contract.
Is there anyone here?
New frontstones, three of them.
I sat down with my.
Councilor Chakoudis, we request, we're going to meet in one week. We can table this, we'll open that until next week, and we can have, in your direction, Councilor Chakoudis, if you'd like, you would send a request to Mr. Donovan to come in and answer some questions as well. Would that be a matter of the, Councilor Chakoudis?
Maybe someone from the DPW as well.
And some, request the DPW and I S T.
Yes, Scott Harney.
Scott should be here.
He's got to now.
Okay, we're going to send, if that's a form of a motion by Councilor Chakoudis to send the notifications to those three individuals?
Table.
Okay, so we're going to send the request first, request is made and seconded. Any discussion on the request to send notifications? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those know the ayes are aye. Councilor Chakoudis, on the underlying motion, you would indicate you would, you'd indicate the motions to table, is that accurate? Motion has been made to table, seconded by Councilor Ford, non-debatable. Roll call.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Craig?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Boyd?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes. Next, petition of National Grid Rafael Penos for permission to install 70 feet plus minus of PVC conduit cased in concrete at MH 12 slash M1 on Smith Street to the end of the property at 170 Union Street.
We'll open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Sir, if you could please state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening, President, Councilors. My name is John Jankowski, 170 Bedford Street in Malden, Mass., 02148, and I work for National Grid. And the owner at 170, excuse me, on 170 Union Street has upgraded his service, and to do that, we have to install approximately 70 feet of PVC conduit on Smith Street. And if you have any questions, I can answer any questions.
We'll finish the public hearing, and then we'll open up for questions. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, I'm going to close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor, and open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition, seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I'm going to close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I'm going to close the public hearing, Councilor Calucci.
Question. You know, I've worked for the council, I'm in the city of Lynn, you guys, you built it, and a couple months later, it's fixed.
If you call, call me, I know I'm in charge, so if you have any thoughts about the protections or.
Can you, can you say your number to the board so we can?
I would suggest not doing that on the record. Excuse me? I would suggest not putting your phone number on the record.
No, I gave my business card.
Okay. That's. Several times. Councilor Seer.
Thank you. Call you, you're ahead. Envy's Nav. Did the whole thing. All the way down to this, we were supposed to finish in section Ocean Street, down the Litchwood Drive, and what you did was, you just put a 4-foot trench down the middle of the street.
You sure it was the electric company, not the gas company? Not the gas company, correct?
I don't know. I'm a regular electric company, so I can't. It's National Grid. So this is one of those 4-foot, they're listening, you guys put in the, you're the gas company, but also you're the.
I'm working for the electric. So I will write this down. East Nav.
Thank you. We're going to thank the president.
Thank you.
So, what are you doing here, Jack? What was I?
At 170 Union Street, the customer has upgraded our service, and to do that, they have to install conduit from Smith Street to the apartment.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to green light, but if there are any problems, the next time you come back, you have to table everything you do. Because it's, it's too much, you know? The streets are like the best. You guys go for a hole, you blame the electric thing, the after, this guy, and that guy, and we're stuck with the problems. Nothing to hear, chief, I'm sorry. Motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Craig?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Boyd?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
Motion carries.
Next.
Next, sir.
Petition of Eastland Popwater, Holy Panicle, Cushing Amusement at Katy Park on July 24th to 25th, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on July 26th and 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Sir?
So Cushing, Eastland, Popwater, Vice President, 31 Maple Valley Road, Midland. This is our first rodeo, so I'm not very familiar with it, but what I've done is I've brought the owner of the amusement here, so if you have any questions, you can ask him. Larry Cushing, who is the owner of the condo, who is not related to me. So Larry can speak and table, you can ask him any questions, you might.
What we'll do is, we'll continue the public hearing, and at some portion, we're going to close the public hearing, the councilors may ask you to come up and then ask questions, but we appreciate you being available. Would you like to express your support, services running?
My name is Larry Cushing, 54 Gandapp, Winter Mouse, and looking forward to coming to the city of Lynn once again to work and help provide Eastland Popwater with some very low, very needed monies to support their program.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, I'm going to close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Sir, please come forward, if you can state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tony Hill, I live at 83 Memorial Park, Avenue 11. I am here to hold the carnival, Mr. One, that I'm pretty sure they had already passed. And I'm here because we are, you know, tired of the kids having to yearn in the bushes. The kids leaving the bottles on the field, the carnival tearing up the field, and I did not hear him why they're having the carnival. Maybe they should have the carnival fix up the clubhouse so the kids can go to the bathroom in the clubhouse. So I'm here just to hold the carnival. Nothing different, we're just a pop owner, they've been there for years. I mean, the traffic is pretty bad for us because they practice on our side of the field, and we have traffic problems, we have all kinds of problems out there. So I hear these people saying they're giving money to Coke Park, to Henry Air, or what about King? You know? I don't hear anything about King. That field is used by more people in this city than any other field in this city. We have a beautiful park down in Holyoke Street, that's for soccer, soccer's gone. So why are we using Holyoke for carnival, for pop owner? So that's all I have to say, I just hope that they start using the other field besides King, because that field is bad.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in opposition, I'm going to close the public hearing for
Um, I hear, um, I, I know Tony Hill well, I, um, I hear his concerns. I'm a little bit taken back by, um, he's saying that he, no money been put into Keene Park, and four years ago, we put six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar rent, put on the lighting, we put a great and quality field down there, but then a lot of, um, field's over, so it's, it's a beautiful place. So I'm a little taken back by that. And I hear his concerns, I talked to him before the meeting, I know, um, the generator makes a lot of noise and, you know, I, I, this is for Eastland Pop Water, this is, uh, this is a program that tries to, you know, fundraise with a can and stuff, but football, as everyone knows, and I think Councilor Lozey, his son, has been involved in a lot of years, it's very expensive, the equipment's expensive, um, traveling with the kids. Last year they went, they went to, uh, Florida, we probably took money for that. So, I mean, it's, it's a good, it's a good thing, this is for a good cause, it's to keep the kids out of trouble, something positive. But I hear, um, Mr. Hill's concerns too, and I'll be certainly down there with, um, pushing if you approve this tonight to make sure that all these concerns are answered. Uh, we have stipulations that we put in place with, um, they clean up the rubbish every night, we have police presence, um, they supply bathrooms, you know, it's a reasonable hour, ten o'clock, couple of nights, it doesn't start till six, it's only four hours a night. And like I said, this is for, uh, a great cause, it's for, uh, one of the youth groups and the kids in the city, so, uh, I just, you know, hope that everybody, like to make a motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yeah.
Yes, Councilor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Craig?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
Next petition, please.
Petition on Living's Critic Row, Living Cast, for permission for assigned permit at seventy-three Bassel Street.
I'm opening, open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, I'm gonna close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. Councilor Seer.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve.